No, that's okay. We want you to go first. We want you to go first. Okay, first thing on the agenda for this workshop is John French and J.B. F. Insigne will be present to discuss the Love Louisiana Outdoors Grant. And he's also going to update y'all on all of our other projects that we've got going on for the city. But the Love Louisiana is the main thing he's here to talk about today.
Yeah, okay. So, I gave you the bid tab, which is to show the bid. Alright, so on January eighteenth, we received bids, and we had actually three bids. One from Benchmark Construction, one from Elite Pools, and one from Southern Side Services. And you can see their totals down at the bottom. Two of them were over seven thousand, or right at seven thousand for some reason, I don't know, and then we have Elite that on his bid, I'll tell you this, he made some mistakes, and that's why he's got so much red on his, on the forms he turned in, it showed it three-hundred-and-eighty-eight, ninety-eight thousand.
Yeah, these four across them, they're the four that he did on, right?
Well, the last one in the green is me, that's my estimate.
That's me, that's you. Okay, there you are. These are the three, okay, I got it.
Yeah, so the middle one is Elite Pools. But, so the mistakes, you can see in red, like, the first one was supposed to have been fifty thousand even, and what happens is they turn it in, and I have to go through and look at their unit prices versus the quantities, and then justify the numbers, and so whatever those come out to be is what his bid is, and not necessarily the number he writes on the front page, because that was just wrong. And so, he, like I said, he bid three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand with an alternate of ninety-nine-hundred, and you can see his total actually was four-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, five-twenty-six, and the alternate, instead of ninety-nine-hundred, it was ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-six, just the way the math works out, and then, so, the base and the total is four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. So, as you know, on this project, the state was given four-hundred-thousand dollars for this project through that Love Louisiana Outdoors Grant. The rest of the money, which pays the grant administration and my fees, was being paid by the city, and that's right at a hundred-and-five thousand. Mine was sixty-eight, and theirs was forty, or something like that. And then, because one of the Indian tribes said a cultural resource survey needed to be done on that site over there, the state said, "That's fine," but they took it out of the four-hundred thousand, so the total forty off on the state was three-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, roughly, it was, you know, somewhere above that. And then...
The survey was seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It determined...
That nothing was over there, yeah.
Nothing was over there.
Yeah, it was a clean site, but they still had to do it for whatever, you know, as they requested. So, the bottom line on this is, if y'all choose to accept this, the amount of money that the additional, that the city has to come up with will be, if you take the base and the alternate, will be, and then factor in that seven thousand, be roughly seven-hundred, I mean seventy-five thousand dollars extra, over and above what the state gave you, so...
So, the total the city will be putting in is how much?
Well, no, additionally, yeah, a hundred-and-five, about a hundred-and-eighty total, yeah. The city will be paying a hundred-and-eighty total to get four-hundred-thousand dollars.
That's still cheaper than building a new pool.
Oh, it is, and it's better than these fifty-fifty grants, that sort of thing, you know, so...
Are we talking about this splash pad?
Yeah.
I don't know, I saw it out of luck.
Yeah, well, and you see, I'm going to say it's Springfield Pavilion and Spray Park, it's, you know, it's not only a splash pad, we've got, we've got the pregnant pavilions that go around it, and then a big pavilion by the stage up there, so, the main part of the project will be this splash pad, though.
What's the money cost, Sharon?
Yeah.
I would believe it's you here.
Bert would give that money, you don't have to do it, you know, we're going to list that for him.
Well, when you say it would kind of have a capital outlay, I'll lay out some nice yourselves tags for it.
So, the state's going to pay four-hundred?
Right, yeah, we don't want to lose that.
And out of that hundred, we've already paid, what'd we say, did they ain't forty?
No, I think forty-six, five, something like that.
We've already paid forty-six, five.
Because they, they did reimburse us for the cultural resource survey, seventy-five-hundred dollars.
Right, but they reduced the four-hundred. Four-hundred, about, or that same amount, yes.
But we've already paid forty-five, so we don't have to pay another forty-five plus this second, this increase.
They will service a lot of kids and a lot of families.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, you're in so far with it, you know, you're going to have to back out.
But do you know anything about the pool?
Well, he's been doing, well, let me just say this, I've had multiple conversations with the guy. He's been through this for a long time, but he hasn't done public bidding, and that's where his problem is. He's built a bunch of pools, he's from, done a lot of work, and, and I can tell, I think he's qualified, but he was new to the public bidding arena, and so that's why, you know, if you don't know, we're on our third go-around of bidding this project. Okay, the first time we didn't get any bids at all. The second one we got him and another company, and that same company, the other company was over seven hundred, and he was, he was around the same amount. But his paperwork was worse than it is now, so he had to throw everything out, and so we bid it again, and his paperwork's all there, the math is poor, but, you know, that's, the other option is throw them out and re-bid it, you know?
I don't know, that's our wise idea.
Well, those are the options.
When would we get started, would you say, if he were to run away?
Uh, yeah, he's ready to go, so...
So, we'd have it for the summer?
Oh, yes, uh-huh, yeah. We'll, we'll, the grant administration is ready to send the paperwork to the state to get the wage rates approved, which, we don't have a problem with that, and then I'm ready to give the contract to the, the actual agreement to the contractor to get him signed, and so, you know, we'll have, we can have him, and then we'll do a pre-con, we can have it going, you know, you know, probably within thirty days.
It's going to benefit the city no matter what we bid.
Yeah, insofar as I think we don't have...
Can't write down now.
Yeah, but that's going to come up Monday night, that additional amount of money will come Monday night. But while John's here, I wanted him to update y'all on all the projects we've got going on, tell you where we are with them, and where the money is with them, because he helps us with the money, to get the money for them.
Okay, I got a, this is my job list I work off, and what I do is just highlight the stuff I'm working on for y'all, so I'm going to just go down the list. First one is the water wells, Waterwell Number Six Improvements, which is so carried on Janus Drive.
Behind the parks.
Yeah, and that project is ready to go, within two weeks, we'll put it out to bid. We've just been waiting. What I was trying to do is not just getting so much stuff stacked up on the city all at once, but, you know, so it's ready to go. It's been in the works for a while, and it'll actually tie in and supplement well mine, which is up on Montgomery. And the, this project y'all have been budgeting for, for a while now, so it's all y'all's.
Several years.
Yeah, been in the budget, so... Uh, the next project is Water System Improvements, Phase Three. We're in preliminary design on that one. That one, that one is being funded through Facility Planning Control or Capital Outlays, a lot of people know it. Right now, the, if you, and I guess all that stuff was given to the council back whenever y'all got it, as far as the property developers and all that, but anyway, the, the part of the, has cash money on it, which is paying for the planning side of this from the state, so we're working on it, we have the survey completed, we're working on getting all the draft done right now, and then, this one will go out to bid, but it, this one is such a big project, it probably won't be till right after the first of next year before it goes. Uh, we already talked about the water park.
But the money, backup on the water park?
Oh, okay, yes.
Uh, that's the part, Wayne got us the cash money, right?
Well, through Capital Outlay, yeah, through Wayne, yeah, and Mills at the time, right.
And it's what, what is it, how much?
Well, there's one-point-two million in cash, and the rest of the money, the whole thing was like seven-point-five million, the rest of the money is in, uh, Party...
Faces.
Yeah, phases, in Party Five right now, and once the plans are finished, we'll get it submerged in Party without, and...
So...
Well, we'll talk about it, yeah, well, the same type situation, yeah, yeah. Um, so we talked about Spray Park. The next one is the Washwater Plant Rehab.
That's a big one here.
Yeah, now that one is in final design, it's probably ninety-five percent complete, because we've been working on it for a while, just trying to get it funded. We finally have it funded through Capital Outlays, Capital Outlay also, and we got one-point-two million in cash that we're going to start with, and we're gonna, this one will have it out to bid, at least part of it, to use up that one-point-two million in the spring, and then, while we get, and then get the rest of the money, go from Party Five up into, um, Party One, and move that along. So, it'll probably be in two, maybe three parts, because it'll have money flows. Now, then, for this one too, part of the money that y'all are paying is the ARPA money, the paid, the design fee on it.
Oh, we didn't say on that board.
Yeah.
We'll be getting, because that ARPA money, we have to spend by the end of this year, and so...
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, we're going to take care of that.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we're gonna, that's what I'm saying, in the spring, we'll use the one-point-two plus what we need to add to ARPA to go ahead and get the project out and going. Okay? Uh, the next one is the Maple Street Water Main Replacement Project. This one is funded through Delta Regional Authority to the tune of two-hundred thousand. Seaweed is at twenty-five, and L-Gap's at twenty-five, which is, y'all's part of that batch.
We don't have to come up with anything on this one.
That's right, yeah, nothing to come up with it, and this actually is in construction, started already, so that was, that was under construction right now. It should be complete, the completion day is April, no, May fifth, you know, and the , according to the contract, they're going to try to get it sooner than that, but that's what we're looking at, you know, weather things will hold it up. Um, the next project is the RET complex, which is the multi-use field with the backstops and the, you know, bleachers.
Field number four.
Yeah, field number four, the one that's not developed.
I don't know, baseball field or soccer field.
It's soccer field, I think they call it a soccer field.
Well, multi-use, it could be either one, yeah, yeah.
It's got the lights, you know, right there.
Right, right, but it doesn't have the backstop, you know, and the little bricks and all that.
Soccer's taken off.
Yeah, and that one is, that one is funded through the state also, and with money that was just given to the city, it's not through Capital Outlays, it's just through their discretionary funds, through the state, but Wayne got that money also.
Yes, indeed.
And you got it, you got it in two parts, a hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand, so we got three-hundred thousand dollars on that one.
We really thank Wayne a lot.
Yeah, yeah, he has, he has, he's done, he's done a good job. Uh, and then the last two are, I just got the surveys back from Cody, one is the Church Street Drainage over here that y'all are very familiar with, and the other one is the hospital, uh, Hospital, Eleven Street intersection, yeah, and so, I just, in fact, I just got the surveys back this week, with the rain and all, he got behind, and so, we'll get something going on those.
That's the Eleven Street intersection?
That's the hot doctor drive over there.
Yeah, 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 that intersection, Doctor Drive and Eleven Street, and what I call it, the drainage and payment, because we've got to work on the drainage, because that power pole, we're getting all that to work, and then get the payment rate is increased.
You may want to go over there, but put that laptop in, it's startled, there's a hole there.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, okay. And that's the list of projects, if y'all got any questions, I'll be happy to ask.
A lot of stuff on the plate, come on.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot going on.
I've got some, I've got a lot of things on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I got the money, yeah.
Oh.
I brought the phone. Yeah. Oh, okay, is that, is that all we had earlier?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions for John, about any of the projects going on? I just wanted y'all to be up to date on what's going on, so...
At Maple Street, you said he was ERA, Seaweed, and whatever you have?
L-Gap.
That's the one small part that they didn't, that they didn't do in the other part of the project, right? The other ones or something?
That area town, that area town, we were able to get grants for, and we didn't do it as pieces, this is the final piece of that negative, that we got, was able to be grants to do.
Okay.
It was originally part of the four-phase water project, but we never pulled it out, get grant money to do it, pay our, in our pocket to do it.
So now, all we've got left is North Acre and...
North Acre, it's a surrounding area, Midbury, south of town, up here, north of town, it's a very, it's kind of out, that line area, but the majority of the nation is North Acre.
Okay. All right, John, well, I appreciate you coming over, sure do. You can just stay with us, you can go back to your...
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All right, I guess next item, we'll talk about the certification, training, incentives.
Yeah, some costs to cover. Yeah, well, one of the things is they already give a certification incentive, right now, it's not very much, it's not really an incentive to go out and hit these certifications, and one of the things we've got to do is plan on, you know, Mike's not going to be here forever, and we're going to have to have somebody to do stuff, and they, they've got to have these required certificates so that we're in compliance, and it's better to train on the job, and we've got some good men out there that have got some of these certificates, but we just need to get them all the way, all the way up to where Mike wants them, and I'm not letting them talk about how this kind of flows, but help me put this together.
The way this is, in the water sewer industry departments, you're required to have certifications in the water sides, water distribution, water production, and water treatment, and on the sewer side, you have sewer collection, sewer treatment, and you're required to have a, you have to pass one, two, three, and four each category, and based on your population and the people you serve, is what class you have got to maintain. Currently, right now, Spring Hill is a Class Three facility, and some of our, I got Class fours across the board, I have since I've been here, but some of our people coming up have the highest thing they'll have is Class Two, and there's been no incentive to, for them to get them, because, you know, I'm here, and that's fine, but, like Derek said, I'm not going to be here forever, and I would love to promote people that are already here that know the system, to fill in the position when we all leave, and, because that's your experience. And I would say something to the guys about taking a test, and it's, for what, why, what's it going to do for me, you know, and I can go better myself much, you know, it ain't worth the trouble and hassle, so I would want to get something to make it worth a while to do it. And what this is doing is it's giving them a quarter for every test they pass, you know? People want grip, they'll make enough money, well, you give them an opportunity to make it on their own, and see how bad they really want, you know, if they want to, council's already done something, if they want more, well, here's something for them to do on their own. And that's basically how it is, what Derek's got it set up is Class One, you get a quarter, Class Two, you pass it, you get another quarter, Class Three, you get another quarter, and Class Four, you wind up with a dollar, and that's an additional five dollars an hour if you get all, all of them in all five categories, so...
And, and it's only getting, it's getting tougher out there with EPA and everything like that, so we really need to encourage our men to...
And along with these certifications, you guys are required to maintain education. We've got to go to four hours of class every year to be updated on the EPA and THH, state rules and regulations, on keeping everything like it needs to do, be, and all that kind of stuff. With anything else, you got to stay educated.
This was the last piece of that puzzle from the last week that we voted on, and we just need to, we need to go ahead and vote on that.
You just didn't, yeah, you just didn't have it finished for that.
Yeah, we did, I got sick, and...
Okay, we'll, we'll bring that up Monday, but, y'all have any questions about that?
Another thing, it gives me something to hire somebody in that, if I got a man that's already certified, I got some negotiating room with this, plus we already have.
Do they have to go somewhere, take two tests, or do they do them online?
They gotta go take them, they won't let you do them online. You gotta go sit through a thirty-two-hour class and go take the test after them.
And what you can like, you're all certain, if you're sitting in the camp, you're taking them, so it's an investment in them.
And I try to send them up as much as I can, but sometimes I can't.
Okay, no questions on that one, we'll move on. Um, we've got a, we'll have a resolution to approve Monday night, it's given me the authority to enter into an arrangement with Virgil Mower to allow the construction of a second-story fire escape on his downtown property that the Fire Marshal says he's got to have, that we, we've been trying to get about eight months, y'all approved it eight or nine months ago, so you don't remember probably, but we've had a terrible time of getting an attorney to get that finished, but it is finished, and it's, it's ready to be, for y'all to approve Monday night, so... He's putting some apartments, is he upstairs, and he's got to have a fire escape for them to get out.
Frankie owns that second-story building behind, right behind the tax town license, it's the only two-story right here on the north corner, and he's been trying, he said for, even with the previous administration, he talked to the previous mayor, and just never got a resolution actually drawn up, but he can't do any kind of construction, no matter what he wants to open, he can't even start the construction unless he builds a fire escape, and the only place that the Fire Marshal wants it lands on the city sidewalk that I guess used to go to a public restroom back in the day.
Right, it won't bother any people, we know it's there, I imagine, but, he'll give him, he'll help him in his business, for sure.
He says we keep it there, I don't know if that'll actually be what it is, but that's what he told me he was planning on.
Yeah, that's good. Um, okay, we'll have that. Uh, let's see, the next one is discuss the quotes to replace the control board for the fire sprinkler system at the CAC building. All right, what happened is, and we're looking into the insurance, I've had, Shelly called the insurance company, we have a board over there which controls all the sprinkler systems of the entire building, and it's a pretty complicated thing, like if a fire starts in the kitchen, they'll just come on in the kitchen, you know, it won't, it won't do the whole building, so, uh, it must be awfully complicated for, for these prices. But we think lightning hit it, that's what we're going, that's how, what we're going to go with, and we're going, I think filed a claim, he said he was hopeful that they might have paid it, right, or, which would keep filing insurance claims, they're going...
They're probably going to send a certified video, obviously, that did my house when it got hit, and they can tell you, they record every lightning strike, and they'll tell you whether lightning hit it or not.
We can actually look it up online.
Yeah, but they, they'll investigate that, we have a ten-thousand-dollar deductible.
I think so, I'll have to, she, she sent me some stuff, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so...
That's better than paying fifty thousand.
And it's something you've got to have, Fire Marshal, Mike, he called him today, you definitely got to have it, so, we won't allow to have anything built unless we do have it. The people that have it now, Johnson Controls, which we were kind of trying to maybe get away from, because of your experiences you had with them, and us too, seemed like every time they came, they, you know, we had another bill.
They ripped your lips off every time.
But, but at any rate, their bid was like twenty, let's see, twenty-five?
On the front page, you know, first page there.
It's an inspector, I think it's on the backside, what is twenty-five thousand?
There it is, twenty-five and eight fifteen, okay. All right, and then we got one from Fire Tech, that I think that's who he went with.
I'd be.
Yeah, and let's see, twenty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty. I was surprised, I was hoping that one would be better. The third one is from Mid-South Fire Solutions. Let's see, what was it, Mike?
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two.
I bet thirty-three.
Thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, he called me that on the phone today, I said, "What?" I mean, golly, so we went from twenty, twenty-seven, thirty-three, so, gosh, you know...
My problem with Johnson Controls was always, they would say, "It's this much," and then when they finished the work, it went up, or when we got in there, we found three of the things wrong, and the bill would go up, and then they sent an inspector out, or two inspectors, and charged me eight-hundred dollars, or two inspectors, um, the PD is a small builder.
Yeah, and then, you know, you dealt with them for years over there, and every time they come to inspect it...
They find what they call a deficiency, usually it's around three thousand dollars every time.
You can mark it down, it's going to cost me twenty-five-hundred every time they walk in the door.
A Fire Tech is who we use out there.
I said, "We'll use them now."
That's who we, me and Mary want to go to, but...
Twenty-six thousand dollars versus twenty, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, what do they include in the bid, like, there's such a big difference? Is it just, would you say...
It's replaced, the way this is set up, I mean, I agree with you, each one of these fire assistance people have their own, and it's, they're the only ones that can work on it. Like, this one we have is a Simplex fire system, and Johnson Controls has a contract for all Simplex controllers. Fire Tech's got their own version, and Mid-South's got their own version, and from what I gather by gathering the quotes is, each one of them's got to put their own system in, and that means changing out what's there and modifying.
That's why Johnson Controls would probably do it cheaper, because they've already got their system in place.
Yeah, right.
And when they, when the other one has to come in and put their system, it's going to cost a little bit more.
That's right, okay. About, I'm going to talk about that Monday night.
No, I think we recently, almost about September or October, I think, we had to pay like three thousand and something.
We did.
Because they come around pretty regularly, like once a quarter or something like that inspecting, and almost every time they come, they're going to find a deficiency.
Well, and, and I'm not saying this is true, I was told by a pretty educated individual, the inspector that Johnson Controls sends out, they get a percentage of whatever they find wrong. It'd be kind of like if you told that officer, "Hey, whatever ticket you wrote, I'm going to do ten percent," whatever deficiencies they find, they get, well, they're going to find something. I know I would.
It's something we got to do, because I've got to do a physical fire watch, like, just build it every day, and return it in weekly to the Fire Marshal until we do something, and then when you have, when they have the events, somebody's got to be up there, do it every hour, on the hour.
We have a feeling that, I mean, we were turned in to the, you know, a good citizen turned us in to the Fire Marshal, we, we think, but probably Johnson Controls.
Because they've been burning my phone, they won't know what we're going to do.
But then when they turn us in, uh, anyway, we're going to get our bids.
Which is knowing y'all wants to go with.
Yeah, okay, the only thing else we have, the chief has a, we've got to accept a resignation on Paul Dunn and also Katie Rankins.
Paul got, he, he was diagnosed with cancer, had surgery, going to be okay, has a recovery time, but he's come to me and said at fifty-seven years old, he wants to retire and makes some moves with the grandkids. Uh, wants to go from full-time to part-time, filling out here and there, and the, mainly dispatch, what he, he said, which, I know I have several part-time, but half of them, whatever you call, I can't do this, I can't do that. I try to use the part-time over, parent paying overtime, but, like I said, the more part-time I have, the better it is, but I have a bigger pull, try to pull from. I try to use the part-time over, paying overtime, but like I said, the more part-time I have, the better it is, but I have a bigger pull, try to pull from. Uh, Miss Rankins got upset on Monday when I was talking to her, and she said, I'll just turn my stuff in. Uh, a day or two later, she comes back and says, I'd like to pull my resignation, I said, why, why should I do, you resigned? I've been having a problem with you, you get mad, you quit, uh, so that has her situation, and I, to the point, I think I already just moved on, uh, from that problem. And then one that's not on here that I found, we found out yesterday, uh, David Silver is having to resign, he's a police officer, and there's some other problems that don't need to be discussed in here. Uh, I have done several interviews, should have several to bring forward Monday night to, to help replace him. Since the pay raises that y'all voted in, once again, thank you, I've got a whole lot more response, and had, I've had four, five interviews, and prior to that, when I put it out there, it was basically, if you got somebody applying, you were paid.
Okay, I think that's what, that's what we.
So we actually have options at this point, yeah.
So he needs to be added to this list, okay?
All right.
And Paul will lose his supplemental.
Yes, anytime you move from part-time to full, uh, from full-time to part-time, the state will drop you down to your shop. And I explained to him, I said, hey, because when I got my supplemental paper February, I said, you did, but you're resigning, you're gonna have to pay some of that money back, you know? I really wish the state would give it at the end of the month, you got it February the first, four January, that way they didn't have to pay it back, but it was set up the way it's set up. And if they, if they ever did implement it the way they're talking, the city and the city controlled where there more.
Well, I know this is off the, off the business, uh, officers looking at here, if you decided you're gonna move them up to a different academy.
Yes, uh, we have tried using Bowser for years, have used Bowser. Uh, it seems as if Bowser is, Bowser has a large pool of people wanting to come and be police officers, the sheriff's there, so if they plunk out one or two, it's not a big deal. Uh, it's more about weeding out the weaker ones and keeping the stronger ones, and I understand that. If I send a guy over there, he's my guy.
Right.
I need him to get through, uh, and they're not, they're not in the position to try to help them get through, they're more like, only the strong survive. Uh, so I, in the past, I have sent some to left yet, but I told them, look, we'll pay for the gas down there, you're not driving back and forth. If you want to stay, uh, if that's the academy you want to go to, then you pay for your own hotel room. I did have two officers, one paid for her own room, the other one saved his cousin out there, which was a much easier academy, and they got through it, and got certified. What I'm looking for to now is probably some academy, uh, it's a little further to drive, I think we'll have better success through that.
Okay, that's, uh, oh, hang on, uh, spark announcement, let's see, they're coming up with the Black History Parade, uh, Saturday, right, at one o'clock?
Yes, sir, we rescheduled, um, because of the weather.
Oh, really?
Yes, it's raining Friday and Saturday, seventy percent.
So when you gonna do it?
I'll know today.
Oh, okay.
We're working on it, and the lineups is gonna always be over by the school, because that's, okay, we wanna make sure our buses end up there, and I wanna make sure I'm there, so. I haven't bought my candy yet, so.
I did, I bought mine.
Yeah, you did.
We'll live in a little bit.
They should call ice cream.
Yeah, right.
They like ramen noodles, that's what they like, when you roll those, that's the best.
Thank y'all.